Really?
Council members, this evening we have a unique situation that the Charter did not contemplate, and that is that we have the Chair and the Vice Chair both absent from the meeting. As such, the Charter does state that the Council has adopted Robert's Rules of Order. And in Robert's Rules, it gives provision that in the event that the Chair and Vice Chair are absent, then the members that are in the meeting can elect a temporary Chair for this meeting in order to conduct their business. And so, tonight, if you'd like, we can pass out paper ballots, or we could just simply do it by nomination and vote to have a temporary Chair appointed for the meeting tonight.
I want to nominate Phil.
Point Councilor gone.
Second.
So you have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I guess the question would be, Councilor gone, do you accept the nomination?
You want to do it, Phil?
No, really, thank you.
Okay. I'll do it.
Okay.
Do I get paid more?
No.
No?
We take less.
What do we do with their motion?
We got a vote on it.
You've got a motion and a second.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, I'll turn the time, obviously, over to the new temporary Chair.
We'll have a roll call. Two absent. Am I excused or excused?
Excused.
Excused. Excused, two absent. Pleasure to be here. Pleasure to be here to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public input. Yes.
Is that where I dock? It's been so long since I got to come and play.
My name is Galen Rockwell, and I'm here representing Joyce Noble tonight. Joyce has a piece of property out on the Lombard Road at 100 Lombard Road. And, simply put, they've been taxed for 124 acres of land, and there's actually only 74. And I've hired a surveyor to check it all out, and we came within a couple of acres of each other. So basically, what I'm asking the City Council for tonight is, the assessing department gave us one year's worth of abatement, which was last year's, and I was told that if I came to the City Council, we could get only two more. So I'm here to ask for those two for '16 and '17, even though we've had the over-assessment since 2000, approximately 2006. And the computations have been done by Penny. And the amounts requested for 2017 is $645.30, and 2016 is $618.30, and 2015 was $606.42. The $645.30 we got from the assessor's department. So we're looking for the City Council for $618.30 plus $606.42.
That's on the agenda to take care of under Item 8A.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Well, I was just trying to be nosy and trying to get it done.
Thank you.
If you need any information, I've got quite a packet.
Would you be able to, in a few minutes, we'll be at that agenda item?
Okay. If anybody has any questions, so.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Galen. Any other public input? Okay, public input session is closed. Declaration of potential conflicts of interest on the Council. Okay, hearing none. Consent, agenda, minutes for Council meeting held June 11th.
Need to approve.
Second. Any questions? Conditions? Anything? Hearing none, all those in favor? You guys can vote. Yes, we can. All in favor? Okay. You? Item number six, bid opening, awards and appointments. Dennis, may I turn this over to you?
You can. So, a couple months ago, you, as a Council, voted to, I guess, allow me to put my name in as the potential Legislative Committee Representative for Roosted County. And MMA has sent the ballots out now for those appointments. And apparently, there was only two people that put their names in for consideration. One is myself, and then the other is the City Manager for Manawaska. And so, according to MMA, there has to be an official vote of the City Council on the issue. And so, on the ballot, you have myself, or Gary Picard, or you can write somebody else in at this point if you'd like. But it has to be done by a vote of the Council. And you're supposed to vote, you're supposed to vote for twos.
I move to vote for Manager Marker and Manager Picard.
Second.
Move and second it to nominate Dennis Marker and Gary Picard. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Dennis.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'll see how the rest of the votes turn out around the state, but thank you.
Formal public hearings and action items. We don't have any. New business and adoption of ordinance and resolutions. Okay, Galen, we're at 100 Lombard Road. It's recommended, I see, by the staff to partially abate the taxes for the property located at 100 Lombard Road, based on the appropriate reduction acreage.
Vote to approve.
Second. Moving seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Dennis.
Who got a tax break? So who owns the land that?
Joyce Noble.
No, the other piece that we overtaxed her on.
It's been sold off to a lot of different parties.
Okay. Abatement of taxes for property located at 595 Access Highway.
Council members, this was a, an old modular home that was on the property, has since been removed for, actually, for many years. And we've kept on the city's books taxes from 2004, 2005. And so, it's been suggested by the Finance Department that we, that the Council approve abating those taxes, and to clean it off.
Are there any structures left on that property at all?
It was like an old garage, but this wasn't assessed to the park owner, this was assessed to an individual that had one in there. But there is like an old garage still there.
I would just, that's all I wanted to know.
Land, block.
Move to abate property taxes located at 595 Access Highway.
Second.
Move and second it to tax abate 595 Access Highway. Any questions? All those in favor? Dennis. Mill rate tax commitment for 2018.
Council, the mill rate has been calculated based on the approved budget for 2018. And we found that when the packet went out, the number that was included for the city's appropriation, it is the same number that was shown on the approved budget that's on the city's website, but the Council modified that budget in March, where they deducted $250,000 from the city's air ambulance service, which the city's no longer operating. And so, the number that needs to be put into the city's appropriations actually should have been reduced by $250,000. And what you're looking at on the board right now is the one that went out in the packet with the $250,000 still in it. And with that, we were able to show the mill rate staying the same and having an overlay of about $51,000. Once you take out the $250,000, the City Council now has some options to look at. And I guess I should point out that in order to keep the mill rate the same and to have that, only that $51,000 overlay, we were tapping into the fund balance, or the rainy day fund, in order to keep the mill rate the same. Now, once we deduct out the $250,000, basically, what it looks like is, if we kept the mill rate the same as this last year at .0239, the overlay would be roughly $151,000. And we wouldn't have to tap into the city's fund balance or the rainy day fund. There is also the potential of, if you wanted to look at reducing the mill rate, last year we had an overlay of about $80,000. If you wanted to stay consistent with the overlay, you could reduce the mill rate to It still allows us to, we don't have to tap into the fund balance. We have an overlay that was consistent with last year's budget, and overall, there would be a slight reduction in the mill rate. And of course, I also provided on the screen, somewhere in between, that .0238 would provide an overlay of $114,000 roughly, and not tying into, tapping into the rainy day fund. The only concerns that we would have at this point is recognizing that, yes, we deducted off that $250,000 out of the expense lines, but we're also anticipating some unexpected expenses this year, particularly with the River Road project, and also looking at the airport and management being taken over for that. And so, hesitant to go down too much on the overlay, simply because those are expenses that the overlay would be covering. We'd be able to look at the overlay and say, that's where some of those additional funds would come from. And so, I guess, unless you have other questions, we've got the numbers in front of you, we can talk about them some more, or do what you want.
I have a quick question for the discussion of actual numbers to discuss. When has this process to be completed?
If you set the mill rate tonight, then that, we will, we set the mill rate tonight, and then you'll have the commitment, basically, tomorrow, and the budget's set and done, and we move forward with all the numbers as they're based on the mill rate.
I get, okay, we can't wait until the next City Council meeting?
The Charter tells us to do it at the end of July, or end of June, and so that's why we're trying to get it done tonight.
Yeah, end of June it will be. Fair enough, okay. Well, we have several options. Any Counselor want to make a stand on it?
I think we should drop the mill rate down to 0.237. That's going to bring us almost $80,000 in an overlay. And hopefully, we won't exceed too much of that in this current budget year, and we can budget for the other things that may surface in contract issues or whatever for next year. It's my recommendation. I think our intent is to try and keep our mill rate as low as possible. I know there are other contributing factors, but they're unknowns, too.
You?
I want to put you on the spot, but... So, we cannot set a mill rate any lower than that at this current?
You can. What you're then, just, what you're tapping into then is your overlay. And the mill rate also affects the reimbursements for TIFs and BEDIs and all those other things, and so, but ultimately, it's your overlay that you're looking at, trying to protect. Because there's, usually, your overlay is for those unintended or unforeseen costs.
The true definition of the overlay is to cover any abatements that you may have during the business year. If there's anything left after that, then it would go into the general fund or designated funds.
I mean, if you want to look at something, even a little .0236, I can show you that. Going to .0236, the TIF would be adjusted down to 404092.87. And... Penny, let's see, I need to take that off. Am I missing anything on the fly that you can see, Penny?
Well, that number is from Finance, and so, when Carl gave me that number on Friday... Okay, so municipal appropriation, what do you have there?
Here you go.
So, going to .0236. So we've just taken out the $250,000 for municipal appropriation, so that's...
Yeah, so you, so other revenues, that's what it is, 4381, 581. That's what, that's what I have for the other revenues.
The TIF financing plan amount would go down because you've reduced the mill rate, so you'd be looking at an overlay of roughly $40,000 if you went down to .0236.
And how much of a difference would that be on your taxes?
$10.
$10?
$100,000 house.
So if somebody was paying $3,000, they pay $2990?
Not much change.
$990.
Not much change. Is it, is it not linear, so if you go, if you go back over to the right? In other words, is there an easier way to cut? You understand?
Be what, about $10 on a $100,000 house? If you go to the, to the first one. 0239 to 00238, am I doing that right? $10 on a $100,000 house?
I'll let the computer do the calculation here, so I know. So on a $100,000 home, it's a difference of $30 a year?
30? A $100,000 house for 0239 would be $2,000?
$390.
$90, right?
Right.
And if it's 0238, it would be $2,380, right?
Right. I thought you were asking about the 236.
Oh, okay, no, that, no, I'm just doing the...
You're right.
$10 on a $100,000 house.
On a $100,000 home, changing the mill rate changes it by $10 each time you go down that.
So you know what I mean by, is it, is it linear? In other words? In other words, I...
It's going to keep dropping?
.0235, would you be pretty close to zero?
Oh.
Yes.
For the overlay, you mean?
Yes.
What do we, what do we have now for, what do we have accumulated?
In the overlay?
In the overlay for past years.
Last year, we had an $80,000 roughly overlay, and we had a unexpended appropriations of close to $400,000. Year before that was another roughly $400,000. And year before that was another roughly $400,000.
So, if we do, as far as the repairs to the River Road and stuff like that, there is money, not necessarily repairs, but say, we had to expense some money to buy properties or whatever, there is money to do that.
In the fund balance.
In the fund balance.
Right.
Are we pretty sure about...
What's the current balance of the rainy day reserve, unexpended fund balance? Sure would be nice if we had a designated sunshine fund. Second. Look at that, basically, as of the end of the month? May?
Did you get your question answered? You?
We're waiting.
So, right now, in, right now, in fund balance, do we have a little over 200, right there?
So this, already available for these overages that were expected, correct?
Not for the reconstruction of the road.
No, reconstruction of the road, but maybe because of costs associated with determining what's going to go on there, okay? So there's enough there.
So it's 2 million in reserve today, and a .0237 gives us, what, 77,000?
Right.
And when you were sitting here a year ago, did everyone agree on 80,000?
Yeah.
So is that considered normal, or?
You can set the mill rate at anything you want. You can set it down to zero. But you just want to be able to make sure that you understand that when they ask you to establish an overlay, initially, the overlay is to establish for any abatements that we're talking about tonight, and you don't know how many more be out there. I mean, how much was that tonight, 1,600 dollars?
1,800.
$1,800, okay? But how many times is that going to happen during the year? It's a guessing game. So in it, but...
We do have taxes still that are, I mean, to be cleared or abated off of the Birds Eye side, and that was...
But probably not $40,000 would be then.
Okay, I'm good.
Jim?
I, I agree with Phil. I'd like to, you know, but I also, we've got some big money coming that we're going to spend. As long as we can afford to do what we need to do on the River Road, I agree with Phil.
And we're still waiting for numbers.
Yeah, we don't even know, so that's kind of hard to...
But you're right, we're, we do have, at least for the initial investigation, we have enough in that fund to cover that part.
As long as we don't need to raise it five mils next year to play catch-up. That's another option that could happen.
Right.
But I agree with Phil.
What, you want to go with the 237 with the city?
That's what I said, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that, too, because we still have some expenses coming up for Birds Eye as well.
Right.
Please, don't confuse that with other things. The initial intent of overlay is for abatement purposes.
Right.
Okay, there you go, just remember that, okay?
I'm talking about what's in the fund.
Yes.
The other one.
Right.
Yeah.
So we, you know, we can do the $40,000, and we still have money to do those things.
So it's not for payments and everything else?
Right.
I have no preference. Yeah, I don't. Okay, everybody had their say? Okay. Well, Chair will accept the motion. Let's try this, to accept the mill at .0237. Anybody want to entertain that motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Moving second, to set the mill rate for 2018 at .0237. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Four to one. Are we going to include the other six items?
There's seven items there that, in the mill rate, was only one, right?
Right.
I move to accept items two through seven. As part of the tax rate calcu, on the tax rate calculation sheet and setting the mill rate, set a tax rate for commitment of 2008 property taxes, recommendation of .02370. Setting the date for commitment on the 2018 property taxes to be committed to the tax collectors pursuant to Title 36505, one recommendation, July 2nd, 2018. Establishing a date that the property, 2008 property taxes will be due and payable pursuant to Title 36505, recommend July 16, 2018. Consider establishing a date for the, for interest to begin accruing on the delinquent 2018 property taxes pursuant to Title 36505, four recommendation, October 1, 2018. Note, the last day to pay before interest begins will be Friday, September 28, 2018. Establishing a rate of interest to be charged on delinquent 2018 property taxes pursuant to Title 13, subsection 505, section four, state minimum rate of interest on delinquent taxes of 8%. Establishing a rate of interest for overpayment and abatement of property taxes for 2018 pursuant to Title 36, subsection 506A, recommendation 4%, 4% less than 8% charged on delinquent accounts.
Thank you very much, Phil.
I'll move that.
And that was in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions?
One more for application. The date was on Item 4. What was the date on Item 4?
Item 4, July 16th is the recommended date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Phil, sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
I deserve it.
No, no, thank you very much. I, I, you know, it's different. I wasn't prepared to do this tonight, so. Now I can't even find the agenda here. Anything else on that issue? Reports of officers, staff boards, staff, boards and committees.
So we have on the agenda itself, the discussion on the River Road, and the only real update that I have there, I sent out an email on Friday to the property owners that we had email addresses for, and the Council, you had that as well. At this point, we've, we've interviewed engineering firms to do the design work. The selection committee feels that the two that were the finalists on there were both qualified, and it really came down to the price of the estimated work. They, it's felt that it was still too much of a price tag, and so we sent out an email to the engineering firms, asking them to rebid the project with a much reduced scope of the project, basically only looking at investigative work through concept design, rather than investigative work through final construction and completion of the project. And so, we're still waiting for revised bids to come back from the firms. We've given them until tomorrow to look at that. Once we get those revised bids back, we'll, we'll pull the selection committee together, review those, and make a recommendation to the City Council moving forward on that. those, and make a recommendation to the city council moving forward on that. I did send out a request to all the appraising firms again with a modified scope of work to appraise the properties, and as of this afternoon, we received one bid, and so that amount was for sixty-five hundred dollars, and we'll bring that to you for consideration on your next agenda.
When did the bids close on that? Today?
It was today at four o'clock.
All right, thank you.
So we can start moving forward. If the council's agreeable, we can have them start moving forward with the appraisals and have on your next agenda for ratification that contract be moving forward. The indication is that they would need the full ninety days to get all of that work done, and that again would be part of this investigative process in the River Road. So I don't know if you have any direction that way you'd like me to take, but.
Who is on the select committee, if I may ask?
We invited council member Kirkpatrick and Joan to be on there, Terrio, as well as Dave Valet, our public works director, the fire chief, and the fire marshal, and myself, and Penny Thompson, our building official.
The email that you sent out, it is pretty obvious that you're sending them to everybody that's involved on the River Road. This information, is that not correct?
Trying to, yes. Those that we have contact information for, yes. There's only one property owner at this point that we have not been able to contact, and that's the property owner on the very south end of the disturbed area.
But that's on the riverside, right?
On the riverside.
Is that the Willie?
Yes.
All right, I'll contact my people maybe later. She hasn't answered the phone, they say, so. I think I have one other source also.
Okay.
Well, I think you're doing a good job in keeping people informed, was my point. That's the most important thing that we do, is the communication, and we count on you as the city manager to make sure that that all takes place, and it looks like it is, and that's great.
Relative to the housing aid that the council authorized, a thousand dollars a month, we've had one individual that's utilizing that, another is pulling information together for submitting to us for some compensation. So we know that two of the property owners have found rentals and have relocated, and so we're working with them. Another question was asked tonight, just before the meeting. If somebody is not able to find housing in Caribou and they have to move to Prescott, would we still honor that thousand dollar commitment? And I indicated that yes, we would. The dollar amount was not predicated upon being here in Caribou. And so I've shared that information back to the person that was asking the question. But other than that, that's kind of where we stand on the housing relocation aid process.
Not only do I like the idea that you're transferring the information of the actions of the council, I also like the idea that you're transferring the information as you get it from the state also on anything. Any questions on this subject of the River Road?
I have a request from the city. My name is Alan Jaubert, I live on.
I'm going to ask you, sir, to grab the microphone. And we'll hear your.
My request? Thank you. My name is Alan Jaubert, I live on one seventy-three River Road, Caribou, Maine. My request to the city is, is that I would, if at all possible, like to have a letter of intent by the city of Caribou to purchase my property, if that is their intention. Because I'm entering into discussions with a bank, and that greatly changes my financing if I am still carrying this property and have to take out a mortgage on another. They're willing to change my debt to earning ratio if I don't have this property holding me back in Caribou, if we know that eventually it's going to be purchased. I don't care about date, I don't care about the amount. Possible?
Would I ask that you submit that request in writing?
Sure.
To the city manager's office? In the appropriate... We're missing two city councillors tonight, and I'd like a week or two to have that manager make contacts with everybody.
Our next meeting is the ninth.
July ninth.
July ninth.
Have an answer for that. Have you asked this before?
No, 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 I posed this to my bank, is where I posed it. And I said, what could possibly change this because of the financial situation? The numbers that they're giving me, I could get much better numbers. But I'm also up against the wall where I have to start a construction soon in order to be finished and moved into my house before winter sets in. Now, I understand that the city is, really doesn't know exactly what they're going to do.
That's the unfortunate, unfortunate mess of this whole process, and it ties everybody's hands.
No, I see legally that you can't say, sure, we're going to buy it, because legally I know that you know you can't yet.
What we're going to do and what we're not going to do, and how it's going to impact this, and how it's going to impact that.
That's why I throw in the word intent.
We can't tell you this, and we can't tell you that. That's just.
But could I get something that says that at this time, the city of Caribou intends to? I mean, I'm not talking about a legal binding agreement.
No, I understand that, but how can we say our intent is when we don't know what our intent really is?
True.
Okay?
Okay, I'll give you that.
If you, wait, one second, please.
My mother said, never hurts to ask, you know.
And we're not discouraging you from asking, that's.
You just want me to wait a couple weeks?
I would only ask that you submit this as a formal request in writing to the city manager, as the first step to get this going. And there's got to be a system set up here where we connect, because there's going to be other questions come up as we go through this process.
But I'd also see that in two weeks, I don't see you being any further ahead than where you're sitting right now. You'll have more people to vote on it, but I don't see how anything is going to change. Do you think you're going to get any new information inside a couple weeks? You think so?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'll go with that, I'll accept that.
I'd like, okay, fine, but I'd like to comment.
Fire away.
That, not only to you, but to everybody on the River Road, but it's my philosophy that government was not made to move fast. Government is made to be a deliberate, understanding thing of motion here.
Right.
And you have a legitimate request. The only thing we're asking is that we follow some kind of systematic way of solving this issue, and to just come up, and for anybody to just ask on the spur of the moment for a request, I haven't got the talent to handle that. It takes time for me to understand something.
Oh, yes, I.
I'm speaking for myself.
I agree, governments do take time.
To you or to anybody else on the River Road. I just have to follow my philosophy, and I appreciate your request, and look forward to talking it over with the manager at a later time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Robin Jaubert, one seventy-three River Road. You guys, there's five out of seven council members, I mean, isn't there a quorum?
There is.
So you guys are choosing not to discuss it?
We don't know what we're going to do. I guess as the elected chairman for tonight's meeting, boy, am I glad I took this one. I guess I'm going to say, and I guess maybe, I don't know, yes, we're not choosing to discuss it right now.
Okay, I have another question. I believe a few months back, you offered to rent assistance for, is it six months or until November? When was the deadline?
It was six months.
It was six months.
It was six months. So in that six months' time, is the council, the city of Caribou, going to know for sure if they're going to purchase that property or not, or what they're going to do?
If I might.
I wish.
This, because I have a question, let me leave it. So in six months' time, if you guys, and we take, we decide to go out and get an apartment because of the condition of the road, there's snow, and you decide not to purchase our house, are you going to continue paying rent until we can move back into our property?
The indication that the council gave when they established this aid was that it would be a six-month program initially, but it would be reevaluated at the end of the six months to see if it needed to continue. And so as far as the knowledge that we will be able to have in the next two weeks or within the six months, we, one of the issues that's come up is even though FEMA funding is off the table right now, the indication is there may be other federal funding that we'll be able to tap into, and we should be able to know in the next week and a half if that's even a possibility. If there's a potential for federal dollars to get, to come into this project, then we have to follow a process of getting appraisals and going through and determining price and so on. It takes time. We can't say, yes, we're going to issue a letter of intent tonight, because if the federal dollars come in, we have to do a certain thing before we can get there. If there aren't federal dollars.
Now, are you guys waiting to find out from design whether my property's going to be needed to rebuild the road? Is that something that you're waiting for? To know if my property's needed to change, to fix the road?
We don't know yet.
So that's, so you're still waiting for a design? So we don't even know if you're going to need to purchase any of my property then?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, may I just say that this council will be willing to discuss any subject you'd like, if we're just giving a little heads up?
You've had since April thirtieth?
Well, I guess the question, the particular question that you want us to discuss, I'm certain about.
You know, I don't know where I'm going to be in six months. That's my concern. I realize you guys have a concern, but my concern is having shelter.
I think the council in the past has shown that we're going to help you, and that we will continue to help you. We just have to take it.
Slowly.
Step at a time, and this very emotional situation for you.
Yes.
It's very well understood amongst everybody, and everybody I talk to in the community.
I can't wait until October to pour a foundation and to request to build a house. So I'm just trying to find out as much information ahead of time as possible, like you guys. So I'll come back the next council meeting, and hopefully we'll know then.
Are you receiving the emails?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, you find those helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And we're going to continue to do it this weekend. Thank you. Counselor Jones.
I can't imagine how frustrated you people must be, because I'm frustrated, and it doesn't even affect me where I am except for the longer commute. I cannot conceive how you're going to be able to save those four houses. And if we have three months for the assessors to do their job, we're into the end of September. They're probably out of oil, some of these people by now. You're not going to get an oil truck in there. They're not getting their mail. They're not getting any of the services, their garbage isn't being picked up. I just, are you sure that even if we made some kind of decision to do something for them as far as purchasing these properties, that we would not be reimbursed? Should we get any kind of money from the agencies with FEMA or whatever? I can't imagine living like this, I just can't. It's awful. And they're going to be cold, and I'll tell you, the road, what happens if the power lines or the sewer lines, or, we don't know what's even there, under there, as far as the structure of that road, and people are using it a lot. And so in order to close that off so they don't use it anymore, and nobody else maybe would go down over the river, you can't do anything until they're not there anymore. So.
The indication that we've received from the federal agencies is, don't discuss purchasing of the properties yet until, you know, and so I.
Until you actually get information as to whether or not you're going to, what you think is going to be in about a week and a half.
Right. We submitted the packet of information to all of the, well, so what's happened is FEMA has said, even though we can't get funding through them, they're willing to help guide us through all the other sister agencies and find funding through them. It's still a long shot, so to speak, but they've requested a packet of information from us that kind of details the anticipated impacts, not only to the specific property owners, but to the economy of the area if the road gets closed. And in the intent that that information will enable these other sister agencies to make a determination if any of their funding could be thrown toward the project. And that was sent up this afternoon to the feds, and hopefully we should by the end of this week have at least a conference call with representatives of those agencies and be able to tell us, yes, we have this pot of money over here you could tap into, or no, we don't, and we'll have a much better idea of what processes we have to go through and what funding might be available.
Is there an application process to this money, or based on the packet that we submitted, is there an automatic award?
There will be another application process we'd have to go through.
And that takes months. Now, also, Joan just brought it up, is the grid and sewage and any water or anything that goes through there all been considered in that new package?
Yes.
So all those impacts are in there?
Yes.
Are there any other impacts out there that we're overlooking maybe by any chance?
Yes.
I'm talking about just that one area.
Okay, yeah, there's other areas.
So we've looked at, in fact, I believe I sent it out to the council so you can have it, it isn't an email I sent to you, but we looked at.
I read it all.
We looked at the cost of power. If that road gets closed, the mayor is anticipating that they may have to terminate part of their lines or even rebuild part of their lines to make up the cost difference for redundancy, which could be upwards of a million dollars. Just the cost that the city would incur of, if we terminated that road, we would have to go in and build turnaround points for any large apparatus, fire apparatus, EMS, school buses, and that could be anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars just to do the turnaround reconstruction. Plus, if we do close that road, we would definitely have to look at purchasing the properties and compensating these individuals for their homes. And so that's four or five homes that could be looked at, and it may cost us two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand dollars to do that. We don't know, but the price tag continues to climb, and closing the road, it could be upwards of two million dollars to just close the road because of all the rippling effects that we would have with it.
And closing the road doesn't really get you out of the business of fixing the problem?
Right, right. And, you know, to bring up, we talked to the Caribou Utilities District, and they estimated they'd have to reroute some of their lines, and that could be, you know, another five hundred thousand dollar project at least to do that. And so it's, we've tried to argue the point that it's not just the city's dollars that are going to be affected, it is the overall economy of the area, and so that's one reason why we're going after some of these federal economic development funds to see if they can help send the money this way, but also USDA, some of their dollars are tailored to economic development and agriculture and rural areas, so.
And also, some of these power lines are tied into other communities?
Yes.
Other places besides just the River Road as well, and it could also affect the pumping of the water. You'd have to pump with a generator. I mean, there's so much involved in this.
The power line coming down the River Road?
The three-phase power.
Is tied into other communities?
Yeah, yeah. There was a couple of them, it was some power in Fort Kent or something, I can't remember where exactly.
I don't think it's that power line, that's the big power line that comes across the river. But anyways.
We're a little too far in the wings here. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I was going to say, year ago last spring, they lost a pole in this area and it knocked out everything from the east side of Caribou, east, limestone, Fort Fairfield, just from that one pole.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Thank you very much.
Diane Gove, 1-850-Roe. Mark, I realize you're just, you're just temporary tonight. And of course, everybody knows what's going on, there is a quorum, so decisions can be made. And I am just asking for the Jalberts, if it possible, for you to make, take a vote tonight. And the vote will state that if in fact, in a week and a half, that FEMA, we do get something, you do get something for the grant for FEMA, that you allow the city manager to have a letter, to send a letter to the Jalberts with the intent that you may be purchasing their property, just the intent. Only because they're talking 1.35% interest difference and 15 years difference. And because July 5th may come and you may not be able to put it on the agenda for some reason, or if the meeting has to be canceled or whatever. But just so that maybe a vote can be taken so that if in fact you hear from FEMA that he's allowed to do that. That's all I'm asking. And the letter would only be an intent, just so maybe they can get things going and move on. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Diane, I have a philosophy that, I will ask the council if they would like to entertain that motion, but I have a philosophy that we shouldn't be voting on monetary or items like that.
It's not a monetary item.
Monetary and items like that unless it's on the agenda.
Well, this, this...
That's a philosophy I have, and I will be voting no against that. That doesn't mean that I'm against anybody on that road.
And excuse me, Mark, you voted no on a reimbursement for them to have housing. And so, I'm sure you'll vote against this also.
Because that was not on the agenda. This is just from my personal opinion.
Okay, yep.
Every meeting, the requests just keep coming in and I see no structural decision-making process here.
This is...
Other than flying...
Yeah, but you know, Mark, you have to stop and think, this isn't something that happens every day. This has been an emergency. This isn't, if this was something that was planned, then yes, going on, on an agenda is one thing. But this is nothing planned, this has been an emergency. And like Joan said, it's just, it is, it's very frustrating for these people and I, and I don't blame them. You know, and they want to be able to plan and they want to be able to order their home. So this is just something I'm asking. Please and thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I was given this honor and I'll respect it by entertaining a motion from the full. I want to ask the manager a question. I just heard you say that they informed us not to be... Correct?
Yes.
Okay. What does the definition of intent mean to those people in this particular situation? Or maybe we might want to run that across legal.
Right. The, the concern from the federal side is that the, the process that they have to determine if it's, there's definitely a difference between are we purchasing the property because we, we need it for the road?
Correct.
There's also a purchasing the property because we want to make somebody safe. And if it's not necessarily related to the road, then this, they're going to say, well, you didn't need it for the road, so if you buy the property, the city, you just take care of it. But if we anticipate or think that there's a possibility we're going to need even a portion of these properties for the road, then we have to go through this process and the feds don't want, they don't want to see that that process has already been tainted. Their dollars have been tainted because we've already, in a sense, started engaging on this purchase of property discussion. And that's, that's why they've said, hold off on your discussions until you know if the federal dollars are going to be there or not. If they're not going to come, then yes, certainly we can re, we can engage the property owners the next day we get that word and we can start those discussions right away. Unfortunately, we don't have the dollars to rebuild the whole road and do everything else that, you know, to know how far down there our dollars are going to need to stretch. But hopefully, in the next week and a half, we'll have a better answer from the feds and know how better to engage with the property owners.
And now, I, I think I would, can I ask the Jalberts one more question?
Sure, fair enough.
Will, will, will the bank, is the bank flexible with working with you as far as timeline is concerned when we can provide you with a realistic answer without potentially interfering with any potential grants that we may get based on intent to purchase versus not purchasing or purchasing?
The bank has been flexible in as far as like a risk analysis for our financing.
Uh-huh.
It's us that are pushing for the deadline because of the building of the home, of what we have been told from the contractors, that we need to, that we were told this about a month or so ago when we first started talking to them, that we would need to pull the trigger and order a house by the beginning of July in order to have everything in there by November. You know, should something go wrong, because they like a little room as well. Now, that doesn't mean that they might not get the house done in September, or they might get it done in December. But this is just what we were told by the contractor.
I understand that, but, I mean, as far as the financing, I mean, if there's some questions as to us being able to say yes or no or whatever to put you in a better position?
Because the bank is going to assume the risk.
It's, it's the bank that needs that information, right?
Correct.
Okay, so could they say, okay, we'll provide you alone based on this criteria and if that happens, then we'll go forward and if not, then, you know?
We can certainly ask, because we didn't have that specific conversation with them.
I don't want to pull the rug out from any opportunity to get federal money to support fixing this road.
Oh, nor do I.
Okay? And I, and I certainly, even though I sound cool sometimes, don't mean for you people to be any worse off than what you already are.
No, no, we just have, we have different needs here. I mean, you're, you're, you're supporting the city. I've lived here all my life, I support the city, but I have to look out for number one.
Right, well, yeah, and we have to look out for the rest of yous.
Exactly.
Okay.
Council members, may, may I suggest?
Thank you.
The, the thousand dollars a month commitment that you've made to the property owner, certainly we could draft a letter to the bank to let them know that this, you know, that intent was that that money be used towards relocation costs and expenses. And one of the issues they're looking at is they don't want to make double mortgage payments for construction and the house they already have. But if that thousand dollars a month could be applied towards this relocation element that they have, you've already authorized that and if you're okay, we could send a letter on that way, if the council's comfortable using those funds that way.
But is that going to have a 15-year impact? Because that's what they're looking at, right? Fifteen or thirty?
Yeah, if you, if you did intend to purchase a house, we would have to refinance, which certainly would be costs associated with originating a new loan.
Right.
But yes, anything will help.
Right. But part of that is the, the ability, well, anyways, it's definitely in the weeds at that point. But we can certainly say to the bank, this is something that is available, which can help offset some of those risks that they're, that they're looking at.
Okay, anybody have a motion they'd like to make? If not...
Do we have to make a motion to allow that money towards his mortgage or however, or is that just part of it?
I would, I would just see that it's within the intent of the, the reason why those monies were set aside and I can write that letter.
Okay. Now hearing any motion, we'll move on. Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Okay? Thank you very much. And really, I hope you do write, write a letter asking that request.
I'll take a look at my timeframe in my mind.
It will get right into the council next packet.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Item 9B, Bird's Eye Site Cleanup Report.
Just wanted to update the council, the, we received bids in for the asbestos cleanup. And I, I don't recall if I shared this with you already at the last meeting, but asbestos cleanup is going to be about seventy-six thousand dollars. And so, Ken Murchison has been leading that and we've authorized them to start moving forward and getting that cleaned up so we can keep that project going. And at this point, McGillens is, they're just waiting in the wing, so to speak, and you know, we'll continue to work that. I understand the intent was to go ahead and get everything cleaned up that we could and using the funds that we have, so we'll, we'll do that. And if I might, I know it's not right under the agenda, it's a specific item, but I've got several other quick updates on several capital projects, just to make the council aware. The school date, the new school, they plan to be under construction in July. And the indication is that the new park would not be finished until roughly October 2019. So, just to give the update on, on some of the timeframes that way. The public safety study, we've, the public safety committee asked that we prepare some concepts on two different sites. The architect has forwarded those two concepts back to us and it, for an initial review. We have some concerns about what they sent back and we've asked them to revise those again before we take it back to the overall committee for consideration. But those were, what they've sent back to us was a standalone police station on the Bird's Eye site, a combined facility on the Bird's Eye site, a standalone police station built in, on the current fire EMS site and, and trying to fit it on there with the existing building. And then retrofitting the existing building to accommodate both the police, fire and EMS. And so, they've, they've provided us some rough numbers that way and they, we're still trying to figure out where the ideal property is for something like this that the, the steering committee asked us to look at. So, that's just the latest on that one. The airport hangar, if you've driven past there, you'll see it's, it's nearly completed up at the airport. We're still waiting to get power run over to the building and there's an easement that we're trying to get in favor of Ameris so they can run the power line through there. And there's, they have some issues with some of the language and we're saying, well, FAA is telling us we need to do some certain things too. And so, we're just trying to, to come to, uh, middle ground on that. There's been some discussion about Mrs. Jordan's preschool. She's contacted me several times about relocating her business, you know, looking to the downtown area. And the indication is that they're going to try to finance those things privately at this point. But they, they may be coming to the city in the future for some, some funding to help with facade improvement, to dress up the front of their building. And so, we'll watch for that. And I was able to find out, this is a more relational matter between the city and the Caribou Economic Growth Council, or CEGC as we call it. There's, we have a revolving loan fund as a city and right now, there's over half a million dollars in that fund that we can utilize for small businesses. CEGC, right now, we've talked about letting them kind of administer those funds, but they, they've indicated to me they don't administer even their own loans, they work through NMDC to administer those loans. So I reached out to NMDC and they said that they would forward an agreement for consideration of the council that they could help administer our revolving loan funds, similar to how CEGC works. The, the gist of that would be that there would be a, a loan committee established that would include NMDC, representatives of the city council and the city. And that, that loan committee then would review any loans or any applications for using the city's revolving loan funds. So we'll, we'll get you some more information on that one.
And the results of those are presented to the full council for approval?
They would need to be.
I, I thought NMDC was managing our revolving loan account currently.
The indication I got from Albert Clark was that we don't have an agreement with them to do those things, but Alan Willett at NMDC indicated that they were managing them. So now, it's just a matter of, let's find out for sure what agreements we have in place and what the procedures are.
Thank you.
So, this loan committee, is that going to act in a different capacity than the CEGC?
Yeah, CEGC has their own funds and the city has its revolving loan funds and so...
Thanks, Gavin.
CEGC has its loan committee and the city have its loan committee. Right? And then, also wanted to just let the council know that I'll be out of town for the next two days. I'll be down in Augusta tomorrow for what MMA considers their new manager training. It's a, a full-day workshop for new managers in Maine. And even though I've been here eleven and a half months, I'm still qualifying for the free training that they're providing, so I'll go down for that. And then on Wednesday, I have an airport correlation meeting at the state offices, so I'll just stay down Tuesday night and plan to be there for that. But I can be contacted if you need to get in touch with me. I think that's all for the reports of officers and staff.
Council members have anything they'd like to report on? Counselor Phil? Back at the beginning of the year or mid-year, so wherever the devil we are right now, we discontinued Cox Street between Glenn and Bennett Drive. So, we should not be placeting that street anymore or doing any maintenance on that street because that street no longer exists. Am I correct that if we maintaining it, it could be perceived that it's still an active street?
It could be. I know during the winter time, we, we continued to plow it, just as a matter of, of course, of getting the plows in and out of the area.
No reason for plows or anything to be in there now. Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is that we should take the sign down and, you know, maybe put up a sign that that is no longer a public way. That's what, that's the point I'm trying to make, okay? Because it could be a potential liability there, we discontinued it, but yet we're maintaining it, so what's the deal? That's all I'm saying.
There's going to be construction starting there fairly soon.
Well, that's fine too, but in the meantime, in the meantime...
Is, can you down here? Is Bowman going to close it off or do we know or?
I, I haven't seen their, their laydown plan for, for their staging areas, but...
I mean, I would just say if, if, if they're not, I mean, regardless of how the status of that is legally, I mean, unless you're going to close it off, you can't take the signs down.
You discontinue the property, it no longer exists, okay?
Yep.
And alls I'm saying is, is that we no longer maintain that property. So it's no longer Cox Street. So if the Cox Street sign's set up there, we should take it down. That's all I'm saying. Because eventually, like you said, they will be probably closing it off because, yeah, otherwise, why did we do it?
Did we do it too soon?
I have two, two items. This first item might only be of interest to Dave.
I officially learned today from the DOT about High Street. Today.
So, the information that you got was just about the bids and the bids were too high? Is that, is that the information that you have?
I, I got a letter today dated June 12th, sent to me on June 25th, that said the DOT has decided to reject all bids.
Yeah. So I think when I got up and talked to the council, you, you might not have been here that night.
No, no, I grabbed the mic.
I'm sorry.
Please.
So, I had made the announcement in front of the council. I don't remember what night it was.
That was the eleventh.
It was probably the night that you were not here.
Yeah. No, I, I just wanted to pass it along and like I mentioned, I think only it's of interest to you that they just officially told the CUD today.
Did the, so, did the CUD have utilities that they had to do work on, other than raise or lower the gates and whatnot, or?
Uh, yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, we, we did a fair amount of work, but, um, I guess I'm just pointing it out that they kept you fairly well informed, but didn't really tell me anything else.
So the official, the, the official email just come out, what, in the last couple days? And, and the guy apologized for not getting the information out, but we had the information come out of the Region 5 section. come out of the Region 5 section. That's why we knew. And as soon as I learnt of it, I mean, the manager put it on the agenda, and then I got up and talked to the council about it, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, so I've got this item regarding the report I gave on May 14th and the 29th on the eight questions I proposed for the hospital to answer. Is there any update on that?
The only update I can share with you is I spoke specifically with Chris up there.
Yep.
Can we please get this on the next agenda? And she indicated that she would be able to.
On their next agenda?
On their next agenda.
Which is...
Hospital board meeting.
Hospital board meeting.
Oh, hospital board meeting, gee, okay.
Do we know when that is?
That's going to be...put on my calendar.
First Monday.
I think they've...yeah, they're showing July 2nd, be your next Board of Directors meeting.
If my question is going into the minutes, can I have it added that it's been over 13 weeks since they were originally proposed? I just respectfully request that it's been 13 weeks. Goes into the minutes of this meeting. Fair enough?
It's been 13 weeks since you posed the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. You. Timmy?
Oh, I got nothing.
Joan?
Nope.
I have a quick report. I am a representative of Caribou on the Caribou on the Tri-Community Landfill, and I'd say the merger has just about come to...it's come along quite well. So far down the road, you almost might say it's done. We're just waiting for certain dates. I'd like to take a moment and give an update on the Tri-Community Landfill and the status of the coming merger. Tri-Community Landfill is a nonprofit corporation owned by the citizens of Fort Fairfield, Limestone, and Caribou. On January 1st, 2019, Presque Isle citizens will become the fourth owner of this nonprofit corporation. Woting members of the new corporation are Fort Fairfield with one, Limestone with one, Caribou with two, and Presque Isle with two. No community member dominates the board, and no community member is minor in voice. As of January 1st, 2019, the new corporation will have the name Arustic Waste Solutions. My observations are as follows: Trash is big business. Trash is very heavily regulated. Trash has the potential to be a big problem for a community and its citizens if not properly managed. I find Tri-Community Landfill to be both an extremely well-run operation and an example of communities cooperating together successfully for the benefit of all their citizens. The operation of today's landfill not only serves the owner communities, but also allows surrounding non-owner communities an inexpensive solution to a potential problem, that of trash removal. Operation of today's landfill is an example of the communities coming together, combining their efforts to deliver a better service for less cost to the taxpayers of our region versus if the communities were to all do it on their own. The operation of today's current landfill did not happen overnight. As with most sustainable good results, it required time and effort on many people's part. As with all good sustainable results, it required a great employee workforce to deliver these services in a friendly, professional, and efficient manner to the patrons it served. And as with most good results, sometimes it required people to take the time to back up, review current and future decisions. No foul, no harm. Special acknowledgement has to go to the two executive directors that have served on the Tri-Community Landfill Board. Executive directors. Executive directors Ken Hessler and current director Mark Draper. These individuals, in my opinion, have talent to know the value of service to the people, knowledge of proper investment, understanding of risk and rewards, and the difference between needs and wants, and the value of maintaining a proper balance in workforce employment. Currently, as in the past, Tri-Community Landfill has operated in a transparent and professional manner. On January 1st, 2019, Presque Isle citizens will join and receive the benefit of this nonprofit organization that was years in the making. They will be allowed to-voting members. Because trash is big business, it requires volume to meet today's regulations, which properly handle and dispose of the waste. On January 1st, 2019, the current Tri-Community Landfill will receive the volume of trash that Presque Isle generates, resulting in a sustainable future for all its current patrons. Dana Fowler and the Presque Isle landfill staff will also be a bonus to the new, basically unchanged, system. From what I have observed, Caribou representation on the Tri-Community Land Board over these many years has been efficient and well-received. This merger is a good deal for all to enjoy. Over the last six months, I have listened in on the merger talks and would like to report to the Caribou citizens that I have been impressed with the professional manner, understanding of community members, and most important, the method of problem-solving that has gone into this merger process. The Caribou citizens can be thankful for their representation on this board and over the many representatives while negotiations have taken place over the years. Limestone, Fort Fairfield, Presque Isle, and surrounding non-member communities are on the receiving end of a good deal. This merger is a great example of the benefits for all. I have been honored to be a member on this board and observing the results of many...and observing the results of many years of the hard work that have come to this conclusion. I would like to have certain parts of that read into the minutes or put into the minutes. I've given a copy to Jane. I can't let this go without saying...
Thanks for the update.
No. It's a well-run deal. I can't say how well Caribou's been blessed from the very...from the many individuals that have made this merger come to a reality. And I'm not just talking about Caribou representatives, I'm talking about Steve Grungeski from Fort Fairfield, Greg Ward from Limestone, and Ken Murchison. Really great individuals to work with. I would like to give a personal shout-out to our Ken Murchison. Ken has put in many years representing the citizens of Caribou and the Tri-Community Landfill Board. He has done it professionally, and in my view, has done it honorably. From my point, he has done it selfishly, with no personal agenda, other than to first, represent the citizens of Caribou, and second, representing the communities of Arustic County. The merger will become effect on January 1st, 2019, the result of time and effort put forth by the many people, including Ken. It's nice to be associated with Ken at the Tri-Community Landfill Board meetings. It's nice to be associated with such an honorable man. I request that Counselor Felt's short shout-out be recorded tonight. First, as Ken Murchison when he was a city councillor; second, when Ken Murchison was a private citizen; and third, and currently, Ken Murchison as a city employee. We all go through trials and tribulations, and Ken stayed on that board during everything, and he is to be recommended for that. And I do not do this lightly, I do not often give out praise publicly, I often do it privately and in written form, but this one deserved it. And if any of you can read the minutes from our council meetings when Ken and I both served, you can say...see that we often took adversarial-type positions on how to govern the city. Does it make him right? Does it make me right? Wrong. It's just the philosophy of governance. So please note in the minutes...
Thanks, Ken.
A shout-out to Ken, and I truly mean it. To...in the spirit of that adversarial relation I had with Ken, I guess I could summarize by saying, "When you take out your trash this week, think of Ken Murchison." I couldn't help myself. No, Ken's a good man, and he served us well, and he's going to continue to serve.
Nicely said, thank you.
Any other items on the agenda?
Yeah, executive session.
Okay. A motion to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session, main title, one, chapter 13, subsection 405.6C, Real Estate and Economic Development.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
No. Can I run?